You messed me up, signing my name. Were you all? Probably not.
Gentlemen and welcome to this Board of Education meeting this Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. I declare there is a quorum of board members present. I'll note that Ms. Walford is attending via phone and that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of board meeting minutes from the board meeting on August 21st, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. The next agenda item is to enter into executive session for the stated purposes of discussion of release of teachers from employment contracts and/or appointment of administrators as needed and three student attendance appeals. Do we have a motion to enter into executive?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now in executive session.
To return to regular session.
Made a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to return to regular session. Is there any discussion? I will state for the record, no action was taken in executive session. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next agenda item is citizens' comments. I'll start with the rules in order to conduct the meeting in an order, excuse me, I skipped pledge of allegiance. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance, then we'll start citizens' comments.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now to citizens' comments. In order to conduct the meeting in an orderly and efficient manner, we ask that you honor the following guidelines. Stakeholder comments are welcomed and encouraged, however, the board will not take immediate action on public comments at this meeting. Any person wishing to address the board must register prior to the meeting. Comments must be regarding programs, policies, or procedures. Comments regarding complaints against employees other than district-level executives or references to students other than the child of the speaker will not be heard in public session. Groups addressing the same topic should select one speaker. Comments this evening will be limited to one minute per speaker. The board chair reserves the right to allot additional time or halt public comments that do not adhere to these guidelines. Our first speaker this evening is Leslie Bracken on book bans.
This is my shorter version of my speech. Dr. Dixon and members of the board, an unofficial list of books to be reviewed for banning was released yesterday. I have questions, please email me your answers. First, when did parents start reporting these books? Syllabi have just come out, there hasn't been enough time to put a list like this together. Did we just start with another county's list and move forward from there? Second, we shouldn't be dealing with book banning at all. There is a process in place for parents to opt their children out of whatever book they want. Parental choice is built into the system. Third, I am deeply concerned about the lack of transparency for several reasons. The board has not released an official list, so we truly still do not know what's on the chopping block. The community committee to review was created with little to no advertising. Fourth, how much is this going to cost to go through this whole process? Are librarians going to get a stipend for reading each book and writing reviews? How much has already been laid out for putting the list together? I've been circulating a petition around the county and there are already 600 names signed to it, more now. What exactly would you like me to say to them? But again, transparency. Beaufort County has 50% of the same books and their list is online, including their decisions. We don't even have an official list from you. Release the official list.
Next speaker this evening is Melinda Bell, book bans, public education, and libraries.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I have a much shorter version now. But these book challenges, book bans across the country are really concerning to me. I have a child in the district, and I'll have another one next year. But if I've ever had a concern about an assignment or lesson or anything, like I just was not cool with it. I always talked to the teacher, and the teachers in Berkeley County have always helped. So I'm not understanding why there isn't, there already is parent choice. Like the teachers are great. There's something really special about them. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. I just want my kid and every kid to be able to learn about different people and places, ideas, and things, and the hard parts about history. I want them, I want her to be able to use her big, beautiful brain and her values to decide what to do, and for us to talk about it together. I want to provide a safe space for her to critically think, read, and write. There's no way possible for me as a parent with my training and education and time available, that I can fully educate my child on everything that she needs to know, to be kind and considerate and respectful and a helpful human, and to learn from past mistakes and make the world a better, more caring place, and just for all. And just one last thing. I hear parents, and I hear board, I hear everybody, but I don't hear from the students. I think we can include the students because this affects them most of all. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Charlotte Cunningham. Statement written by a Berkeley County School District teacher pertaining to instructional materials being approved.
As an educator for Berkeley County School District, I have been given new obstacles in completing my job. I have been asked to have all novels approved first by my administration, and then sent to the district office for approval. After district approval is received, parents then have to be given seven days until a novel can be taught. The novels I teach are already included in district curriculum and pacing guides. We are now entering week three of school, and my novels have not been given approval. The approval request was sent in by the week of eight fourteen. By the time approval for the novel is approved, the first nine weeks will be half over, and I could be moving on to the second novel of the year. If we have to have these new rules, no problem. I will do my due diligence. However, I expect the district to do the same, and approve the reviewed and recommended novels in a timely manner. Don't hold me accountable if someone is not doing their job, so I can do mine. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Cindy Fisk. Statement written by a Berkeley County School District librarian.
Good evening. The statement was written by a Berkeley County School District librarian. Retired Professor Rudine Sims Bishop stated that children need books that are mirrors to allow children to see themselves and their own experiences, windows they can look through to see other worlds that they can then compare to their own, and sliding glass doors to allow them to enter other worlds. When citizens seek to remove books from our library collections, underrepresented students receive the message that they are devalued in society. When students lack understanding because they are not given the opportunity to read diverse texts, barriers are constructed that perpetuate hate, false beliefs. Our students deserve to feel valued and to be provided when the necessary tools to understand themselves, others, and how to live as members of a global society. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Sharina Haynes on transparency.
Good evening, Superintendent Dixon and board. Objections and challenges to books available in school are nothing new, and parents and citizens are within their rights to voice concerns about the appropriateness and suitability of particular books. BCSD is no different, as there are current policies on school libraries, such as the IFBD, and the selection of library materials, such as the IFBDAA. The policies are based on the American Library Association School of Bill of Rights. It is the board's obligation under your established policies and the criteria that the board already has set for selecting library books. Books are listed and approved by the State Department. When you propose book banning committees and limit transparency to parents, employees, and concerned citizens, you imply that there is some problem that needs to be corrected through the school board, and that is not true. The NAACP Goose Creek Branch supports our amazing educators and librarians we have here in Berkeley County. We put our support behind their expertise and the laws and policies that we already have in place to provide our students with the best possible education. We have real problems in Berkeley County that we elected this board to address. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Tracy Thompson Bryant on personal health and wellness
Good evening. I am a graduate of Berkeley County School District. I currently have a son who is now a student in Berkeley County School District. My question or my concern is, the personal health and wellness course that he's taking, the information that he brought home, I looked at the syllabus. The syllabus had no information about the materials that was going to be used. It only gave me information about the week and what they were going to be covering. Now, my concern as a parent, there's no course information, no content. The book information's not there. There are no online resources where the information would be coming from. So I want to know, how do I go about finding out what information or what book has been assigned, or any online information has been assigned for that course? Now, I did look it up on the state website, and I saw the information that was there. In doing my research, I found out that one of the manuals that I guess was used through another student, was information provided, a manual provided by, I guess, a group called the Heritage Keepers, whoever they are. But I went and looked up the information. So my question is, what's listed on the syllabus, and what material was introduced for the sex ed part of the personal health and wellness is a conflict. So as a parent, I want to know what information is being given to my son. That's my right to advocate for my son. And so that's why I came here today, because I need answers. I need to know, when a syllabus is done, what information is being provided? Shouldn't the book information be in the syllabus? If not, online information. But specifically for that personal health and wellness, for the sex ed, I want to know what curriculum is being used for that course.
The next speaker is Levon Holbert.
Thank you. I'm a grandmother, and I've had kids that graduated out of the Berkeley County School System, and I have never been so upset as I am now because I have grandchildren that's coming through the system that what's going on at this school board, with letting people come in and decide about our books, what our kids can read, what they can't read, really upsets me. I looked at some of the stuff, and to the books that I've read, and I'm sure some of you guys have read it, To Kill a Marking Bird of Men and Mice, those books are about the Depression. That's about history. You cannot change history. And all this book banning stuff, especially with those two, leads me to think that you guys want to kind of take things back, and I don't think that's right for our kids. Our kids need to know about the Depression. They need to know about racism, because racism is still alive. It's just under the counter. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Krista Campbell on discipline.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk with you. I am a grandmother, and I want you to picture this. I have been homeschooling my grandbaby for three years. He's been protected, covered. He's traveled. He's been a junior honor society member. He enters into, now after much discussion over the summer, into the public school again. He enters August 21st, has a great day. I'm concerned. Everybody's concerned about me. He comes back home on the 23rd, and he's been suspended from school. Suspended because he took the stance to protect himself from a bully who had decided that he was fair game, and he could come and attack him. Now, there's so many aspects to this, but where I'm coming from, more so than just my grandson being victimized, but now we've got a kid who is a bully, and both of them are back in the same situation, in the same classroom, and the same issue is still happening. We need to come together.
Anything like I just was not cool with it. I always talked to the teacher and the teachers in Berkeley County have always helped. So I'm not understanding why there isn't. There already is parent choice, like the teachers are great. There's something really special about them. So I just wanted to say thank you to them. I just want my kid and every kid to be able to learn about different people and places, ideas and things and the hard parts about history. I want them, I want her to be able to use her big, beautiful brain and her values to decide what to do and for us to talk about it together. I want to provide a safe space for her to critically think, read and write. There's no way possible for me as a parent with my training and education and time available that I can fully educate my child on everything that she needs to know, to be kind and considerate and respectful and a helpful human and to learn from past mistakes and make the world a better, more caring place and just for all. And just one last thing, I hear parents and I hear board, I hear everybody, but I don't hear from the students. I think we can include the students because this affects them most of all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Charlotte Cunningham. Statement written by a Berkeley County School District teacher pertaining to instructional materials being approved.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As an educator for Berkeley County School District, I have been given new obstacles in completing my job. I have been asked to have all novels approved first by my administration and then sent to the district office for approval. After district approval is received, parents then have to be given seven days until a novel can be taught. The novels I teach are already included in district curriculum and pacing guides. We are now entering week three of school and my novels have not been given approval. The approval request was sent in by the week of eight fourteen. By the time approval for the novel is approved, the first nine weeks will be half over and I could be moving on to the second novel of the year. If we have to have these new rules, no problem. I will do my due diligence. However, I expect the district to do the same and approve the reviewed and recommended novels in a timely manner. Don't hold me accountable if someone is not doing their job so I can do mine. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Cindy Fisk. Statement written by a Berkeley County School District librarian.
Good evening. This statement was written by a Berkeley County School District, like, school librarian. Retired Professor Rudine Sims Bishop stated that children need books that are mirrors to allow children to see themselves and their own experiences, windows they can look through to see other worlds that they can then compare to their own and sliding glass doors to allow them to enter other worlds. When citizens seek to remove books from our library collections, underrepresented students receive the message that they are devalued in society. When students lack understanding because they are not given the opportunity to read diverse texts, barriers are constructions, are constructed that perpetuate hate, false beliefs. Our students deserve to feel valued and to be provided when the necessary tools to understand themselves, others and how to live as members of a global society. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Sharina Haynes on transparency.
Good evening Superintendent Dixon and Board. Objections and challenges to books available in school are nothing new and parents and citizens are within their rights to voice concerns about the appropriateness and suitability of particular books. B C S D is no different as there are current policies on school libraries such as the IFBD and the selection of library materials such as the IFBDAA. The policies are based on the American Library Association School of Bill of Rights. It is the board's obligation under your established policies and the criteria that the board already has set for selecting library books. Books are listed and approved by the State Department. When you propose book banning committees and limit transparency to parents, employees and concerned citizens, you imply that there is some problem that needs to be corrected through the school board and that is not true. The N A H P Goose Creek Branch supports our amazing educators and librarians we have here in Berkeley County. We put our support behind their expertise and the laws and policies that we already have in place to provide our students with the best possible education. We have real problems in Berkeley County that we elected this board to address. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Tracy Thompson Bryant on personal health and wellness curriculum.
I am a graduate of Berkeley County School District. I currently have a son who is now a student in Berkeley County School District. My question or my concern is the personal health and wellness course that he's taking, the information that he brought home, I looked at the syllabus, the syllabus had no information about the materials that was going to be used. It only gave me information about the week and what they were going to be covering. Now, my concern as a parent, there's no course information, no content, the book information's not there, there are no online resources where the information would be coming from. So I want to know, how do I go about finding out what information or what book has been assigned or any online information has been assigned for that course? Now, I did look it up on the state website and I saw the information that was there. In doing my research, I found out that one of the manuals that I guess was used through another student was information provided, a manual provided by, I guess, a group called the Heritage Keepers, whoever they are. But I went and looked up the information. So my question is, what's listed on the syllabus and what material was introduced for the sex ed part of the personal health and wellness is a conflict. So as a parent, I want to know what information is being given to my son. That's my right to advocate for my son. And so that's why I came here today because I need answers. I need to know when a syllabus is done, what information is being provided? Shouldn't the book information be in the syllabus? If not, online information. But specifically for that personal health and wellness, for the sex ed, I want to know what curriculum is being used for that course. Thank you.
The next speaker is Levon Holbert.
I'm a grandmother and I've had kids that graduated out of the Berkeley County school system and I have never been so upset as I am now because I have grandchildren that's coming through the system that what's going on at this school board with letting people come in and decide about our books, what our kids can read, what they can't read, really upsets me. I looked at some of the stuff and to the books that I've read, and I'm sure some of you guys have read it, To Kill a Marking Bird of Men and Mice, those books are about the depression. That's about history. You cannot change history. And all this book banning stuff with, especially with those two, leads me to think that you guys want to kind of take things back and I don't think that's right for our kids. Our kids need to know about the depression. They need to know about racism because racism is still alive. It's just under the counter. Thank you.
The next speaker this evening is Krista Campbell on discipline.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and talk with you. I am a grandmother and I want you to picture this. I have been homeschooling my grandbaby for three years. He's been protected, covered, he's traveled, he's been a junior honor society member. He enters into now after much discussion over the summer into the public school again. He enters August 21st, has a great day. I'm concerned, everybody's concerned about me. He comes back home on the 23rd and he's been suspended from school. Suspended because he took the stance to protect himself from a bully who had decided that he was fair game and he could come and attack him. Now, there's so many aspects to this, but where I'm coming from, more so than just my grandson being victimized, but now we've got a kid who is a bully and both of them are back in the same situation in the same classroom and the same issue is still happening. We need to come together and stop the bullying. That means hurt people, hurt people. So the baby that decided was he was going to be a bully needs to be taken care of just as much as my grandbaby needs to be taken care of. And there needs to be a program that can help the entire school. It's not just about the two of them because I'm sure they're not the only ones. And I would love to give my services to help in this process so that we can get something established that teaches children how to get along, how to care for each other, those basic citizenship kinds of things that we want kids to do and adults to do. We need to do that in our school and we need to start it now. My baby went back to the same situation and was bullied yet again after the third day of his suspension. I am very upset about that. I want there to be a change, but not just for him, but for everybody so he's, so no one else has to go through this again within our schools here in Berkeley County. Thank you so much. Oh, by the way, I got lots of resources. I'm a retired teacher, got lots of resources that schools can use in order to help facilitate this process. Even Amazon has a book that can help you.
The next speaker this evening is John Reed on community recommendations board response.
I'm back and on behalf of the 200 educators, students and parents who met in early April and then on through June, went through the time and trouble to put together recommendations on what they believe the issues the school board should be focused on, both here and across the region. I might point out that book banning was not among the issues they thought important at the time. I'm also here representing the 15 nonprofits and churches that supported that process of getting those opinions together. The findings were sent to you in early June, each board member, and they have been sent to you more than once. Recognizing the difficulties you have and responding to recommendations like that, I've offered to meet with my board representative, the chairman, informally and discuss in a way that might be convenient for you, how the board could respond to that. But there have been no responses and all 200 people know that there have been no responses to date. It seems to me, particularly for those of you who have devoted your lives to service, that you are doing a disservice to these people who are trying to express to you what their views are. I would encourage you to respond to them and as soon as practicable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will be in touch. Dr. Middleton obviously participated in that process and I was talking with Dr. Dixon earlier today too about us setting up a meeting with Dr. Whitley, Dr. Middleton and myself to talk and respond. So appreciate you coming again.
Well, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The next speaker this evening is Ann Conder on Ellen Weaver and departing from the South Carolina Association of School Librarians.
First thing I want to do is I want to thank you all for paying attention to the parents and the parents' concerns, especially when it comes to books. And I would like to read, you may already be privy to the letter that Ellen Weaver sent to the South Carolina Association of School Libraries, but I want to read a little excerpt. Parents are entirely justified in seeking to ensure educational materials presented to their children are age appropriate and aligned with the overall purpose of South Carolina's instructional program and standards. When S C A S L labels those efforts as bans, censorship or violation of educators' intellectual freedom, the result is a more hostile environment which does not serve the needs of children. S C A L S L's decision to send a letter to South Carolina School Board members, which extensively quoted politicized rhetoric from a New York School District employee who states that districts and boards should probably place more consideration on the emotional well-being of students rather than on attempts to pacify parents actively erodes the trust and partnership we must build between parents and educators. In South Carolina, student well-being and parental satisfaction are not opposing interest. And I agree with this 100%. Thank you.
The next and final speaker this evening is Lacey Nelson on student bullying.
Good evening, Dr. Dixon and board members. My name is Lacey Nelson. I have three children that attend Berkeley County School District, two who is at the middle school, one who is at the high school. Since the beginning of the school year, my daughter has been a victim of bullying. She told me who it was and how often it happened. I brought this serious situation to the attention of the school admin and coaches hoping it would be handled, but obviously it was never handled. Excuse me. At the football game on August 18th, my daughter tracked me down and told me that she was being bullied again. At this point, I followed my daughter to speak with the girl involved. I made a request very clear to keep and kept it simple, leave my daughter alone, the nonsense needs to stop. While I was walking away, the girl became disrespectful, rude, talked back to me. It was at this point where I lost my temper. I regret using inappropriate language, but I never threatened or touched a child. And there is a video to prove it. The yelling ended in minutes at that point afterwards. Did anyone from the school or law enforcement investigate it at that moment? No. The following Monday, I received a call from the A.D. asking me to come to the school. I couldn't get there until Tuesday after work. When I arrived, I was handed a letter from Brian Fenton at the school, at the district office and a trespass notice from Deputy Altman banning me from the high school for six months. Still to this day, no one from the school or law enforcement has asked me what really happened or really inquired about my daughter. I would like to conclude by saying I agree with Mr. Fenton's statement. The safety and security of our students is our highest priority. I look forward to receiving a solution and writing from Philip Simmons High School on a plan to protect my daughter from future bullying. Additionally, since there was a complete lack of due process, I am respectfully asking the district to immediately revoke the six month trespass notice against me. And the reason why is because I have been a part of the football team in school, very active. I don't drop my children off to any football games. I have a son who plays football. I volunteer with the feeding of these children, not school money, it's my money. I've been very good to these children and they always look forward to seeing me there and I love these kids. I will never hurt or harm anyone's child. But when it comes to my child and she's being bullied or he is being bullied, I'm not going to stand for it because it's happened multiple times at the school and I'm tired of it. Something needs to have been done with her. The officers knows that she's a problem and they still suspended me from the school. I don't even feel safe with dropping my children off to a football game. I am a single parent. I take care of my children myself. So I feel awkward allowing them to represent Philip Simmons High School for B Team Basketball, Football and also JV cheerleading, I'm sorry, B T and cheerleading for the school and they're in middle school. They walk from the, from the middle school to the high school. So the time that I do get to spend with them is on games night. I don't feel comfortable dropping them off because who's going to be there to advocate for my child? So if I can get some type of resolution about this, I have paperwork, I have all of the trespassing paperwork, I can email it to whomever after this is over with, but I'm definitely not in agreement with this. And I do have other people who can definitely stand in agreement with me as well. Thank you and have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with policy B A, I'd like to respond and, and make some comments about some of the, some of the citizens' comments. Some of the comments have indicated that the board is banning books. That's further sing from my mind. But let me just say that I'm aware that I think there is a total of 93 books that may be reviewed. I don't have that list. I don't know which books there are and I don't even know who's on the, on the review committee. I could check out, but if you think that I'm aware of all of this information, I'm not. But I do know policy because I was an administrator and a teacher for 41 years in Berkeley County School District and I wrote some of the policy. The policy basically is very clear. In order to review a book, the parent or guardian of the student has to fill out a form certifying and verifying that they've read the book in its entirety and they have to specify what objections they have for the book. So I have no problem following policy because that's the way we operate, or at least that's the way we should operate. I'm not aware, I've been told rightfully or wrongfully, that one person has submitted 93 books for review. I don't know if that's true, but I would hope that each book would have its own form and to certify that the person has read the book and to verify and specify what the book, what, what issues the book present to them and why they feel like it should be reviewed. So that's just my information to you, that I was not aware of all of this stuff and I am, I am a policy person, but I want to make certain that each textbook or each library book that is reviewed is done in accordance with the policy. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. We'll now move on to any action as required from executive session and we will start with the student attendance appeals. Do we have a motion in the matter of attendance appeal number one? I'll make a motion to deny the appeal of student number one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion passes. Do we have a motion in the matter of student number two?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we deny the appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Matter of-
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appeal for student number three.
We have a motion to approve the attendance appeal of student number three. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
Nay. All right. Show hands for the nays. We'll start with the nays. Motion carries. All right. Then we have temporary committee assignments. We are missing a couple folks tonight, so... Oh, Mr. Ramsey, we got one up, one other motion too.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the personnel recommendations of the administration as discussed in executive session for the current school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. All right. Michael, who's normally on your, the Finance and Human Resources Committee with you? You and Sally? And Yvonne?
Wigfall.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on, on their committee tonight.
Okay.
So yeah, so the Academics and Innovation Committee, we've got everybody here, but the Finance and Human Resources, we will add Ms. Bradley to that. All right, we'll now start with the Committee on Academics and Innovation.
I'm calling the Committee on Academics and Innovation to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion approved three to zero. The only item on the agenda is the Head Start Budget Expenditure Report for July 2023, Head Start Credit Report for July 2023 and prospective new hires. It's a pleasure of the committee.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against, nay. Motion's approved three to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor or any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved three to zero.
Mr. Ramsey.
I'm calling the Committee on Finance and Human Resources to order. I declare there's a quorum of committee members present and note that the media has been given proper notice pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Our first agenda item is out of state travel. Ms. Marcy Abersum, you are recognized.
Thank you, Committee Chairman Ramsey, Board Chairman McQuinlan, Dr. Dixon and board members. Tonight, finance is requesting the approval of out of state travel as presented.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
For the chair, I move to approve out of state travel as presented by administration.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. Our second agenda item is R F Q 683-22-23 Fire Alarm Updates. Ms. Abersum, you are recognized again.
Thank you. This request for qualifications was conducted to secure a contract with a qualified firm capable of assisting, of assisting the district with planned fire alarm upgrades to be completed under a design build contract over the next five years. Previous fire alarm system upgrades have been limited to a manufacturing, manufacturer imposed sole source contractor, but recently Edwards, the manufacturer of the E S two, EST two and EST three systems used by the district have added multiple authorized partners in our area, allowing us to conduct an open competition for these projects. There are now four companies listed as authorized partners by Edwards and we received qualification packages from two of them for this solicitation. After evaluation and ranking and reference checks for both companies, the highest ranked and recommended awardee is Convergent Technologies LLC for a projected one-year contract value of $151,808 and an estimated five-year contract value of $491,808.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
For the chair, I move to approve the award of R F Q 682223 for fire alarm upgrades to Convergent Technologies LLC for initial one-year term valued at $151,808 with the option to renew for four additional one-year terms for a total estimated contract value of $491,808.
Second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of this motion, respond by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, respond by saying nay. The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abersum. At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved by a vote of three to zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. The next agenda item on the regular session is the superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you, Chair McQuinlan. Good evening, board members and our fine citizens of Berkeley County School District. We're beginning our third week of school and I am very excited with the direction we are headed as a district. The State Department, State Department of Education released our state assessment data today and we are pleased that our test results reflect overall positive growth trends and we are proud of the gains our students are making. As a district, we increased by 6.1% in the Met and exceeds category in English Language Arts from last year to this year, with every grade level showing an increase in achievement. In math, we saw growth in third, fourth, sixth and eighth grades. We have hired a secondary math coordinator this year who will work and coll-. We have hired a secondary math coordinator this year who will work in collaboration with our elementary math coordinator to prioritize the developmentally appropriate instructional strategies in math for all grade levels. School support has increased with coaching, accountability, and support systems, beginning with myself to members of cabinet, executive directors of schools, and principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, teachers, and all support staff. These tools will provide necessary guardrails within our system that will ensure that we are all working towards the same district goals for student achievement. These goals are in our district strategic plan, our school renewal plan, but we will be more intentional in communicating them so we are all steering in the same direction. When we all share the same instructional vision, we get better faster. The BCSD Teaching and Learning Framework, rebooting professional learning communities, and our multi-tiered systems of support, which we call MTSS, are our district and school priorities. Leadership support and accountability has been designed to focus on systems, culture, instruction, and talent. These strategies, in addition to our daily operations, will yield positive results as it relates to student achievement. While we have areas of growth to celebrate, we will not be satisfied with our progress until all students are achieving at high levels. It is clear that we must stay the course with our focus on teaching and learning. Since July, I have began and had the wonderful opportunity to visit a majority of our schools with some initial visits, which are informally called check-ins. And this is a time for principals to showcase any new and exciting things going on and also share any concerns that they may have. In September this month, I will continue these visits and begin classroom observations with our principals and our principal supervisors so that I can see the progress our great teachers are making, observe student learning, and have an opportunity to review, adjust, and offer support to instructional staff as they continue their focus on teaching and learning. I'm very much looking forward to these visits because a mentor once shared with me, victory is in the classroom. I had the opportunity last week to join our county council and county administration to celebrate county native and historian Keith Gordine's published work on the 100-plus historical markers across the county and associated map. Gordine's work will be placed in all Berkeley County schools and local businesses so that the community members can also learn more about their local history. I've also been informed that coming up on Constitution Day, all eighth graders will receive an American Constitution, U.S. Constitution, that will go into their U.S. history classes, which I'm so thankful for those partnerships. I've visited Stratford High School for the kickoff ceremony for their school-wide service project that brings awareness to childhood cancer. I was inspired by the administration, the staff, the community, and student leaders who led this kickoff. And I also wanted to thank our Representative Mark Smith and the Office of Congresswoman Nancy Mace for their participation in this event. I ended my week formalizing the Berkeley County YMCA district-wide partnership. This partnership will provide the opportunity for all BCSD employees to have a single membership to the Kane Bay or Berkeley YMCA at no cost to the employee. This is our introductory agreement and we will continue to develop this opportunity in the future, excuse me. As you know, our week was cut short due to Hurricane Idalia and however, I commend our cabinet, our district and school leadership, and all of our support staff, our parents, our school board, and our partners for their prompt response to ensuring the student and employee safety was prioritized. With Wednesday's half-day and Thursday's e-learning day, instruction was not interrupted with significant impact. A preliminary survey of our school buildings showed that there was no major damage done and we are thankful that everyone was safe from harm. As always, it is my pleasure to recognize Casey Giddens, 2023 District Teacher of the Year, and Dr. Gloria Gilyard, cross elementary teacher, as well, I see her back there, Taryn Davis, Goose Creek High School teacher extraordinaire, and as members of our teacher forum and representatives. Your continued leadership, your representation, your support, your commitment to students and teacher quality are examples of many others in our district and for that, we always sincerely thank you. Great things are happening in Berkeley County School District, keeping our focus on teaching and learning and we are making a positive difference. So continue to check our website and follow our social media accounts for all things BCSD. This concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon.
You're welcome.
The next agenda item is the board chair updates and I do not have an update or report this evening, so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned.